Do you want to start the meeting first?
Oh, yeah.
All right. I'm calling to order the meeting of the City of solving for September 26, 2016. Thank you for attending. Before we get to any business, or should I go to the roll call? I just wanted to do a quick thing.
Turn your mic on there.
Is that better? Is it all right if I make a few thank you's before I do the roll call? Or do we?
You're the mayor.
I'm the mayor. I just want to thank Mayor Richardson and the city as well. Brad, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be the mayor of the day. It was an exceptional day for me. Coming into today, I was John Q. Public. I had very little idea of what is going on in the City of solving. But after today, I have a very deep appreciation for the staff. I believe it's 35 or so, plus the sheriffs and the fire department. They are exceptional people. These are people who, I think, care greatly about this city. They've got character. They've got certification. They have commitment to the city. And I have a whole new respect for the City of solving. I can say right now, I'm very proud to be a resident of the City of solving. And being a mayor for the day hugely contributed to that. So thank you for the opportunity to be the mayor of the day. I will be handling, handing the gavel over to the mayor here quickly. We now are going to do the roll call.
Councilmember Deuce.
Present.
Jameson.
Here.
Skid.
Present.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
All right. And I will be here as the mayor pro tem for just the first three items on the agenda. All right. And now I'll have you on your feet as I will lead you to the pledge of allegiance. And I want to remind you that there's no pause in the statement, "One nation under God." There is no pause.
Thank you. I've been trying to teach these people.
It's the most important thing you say on a regular basis. You say it properly. So take your right hand and place it over your heart and hold it with honor and respect and follow me in the pledge of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. You can take your seats. At this point, Mayor Richardson, I believe I'm going to relinquish the gavel to you. All right. And again.
Wait until Rotary tomorrow. You're going to be in big trouble.
That's my rule. I don't know why people don't say it properly, but it should be done at a meeting like this.
Wait before you go.
Oh, okay. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Glad you joined us.
I had a great time.
Good job, Art. Good job.
Got a wonderful team running this city. People should be very proud to be a resident of solving. I can tell you that.
For me, it was a great experience to have you as mayor for a day because you helped me learn more about my city. This guy asked the right questions at the right time and dealt with some detail that I wasn't aware of. I thank you for that. And I thank you for being, and I thank you for your contribution for the auction.
Oh, absolutely. It was worth every penny.
It was great. And though we have a certificate of appreciation.
Excellent. He also had a business card today, so.
Yeah, I handed him out.
You handed him out, too.
I handed him out. They're looking at me, Mayor.
I know.
And somebody's established himself.
In two years, there'll be another mayor on election.
Yeah, I'm sure that's.
I'm not running as a riding candidate.
I'm sure. It's good.
This is your certificate from them.
All right. Great day. Very memorable day.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate having.
And we can continue on with the rest of the tour if someone would like.
All right.
He didn't get to see it all.
There's so much you can learn. Awesome. Very, very impressive.
Thank you, Art.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
See you in the morning.
Yeah.
I would suggest that any of you that have the opportunity to bid on the mayor for a day that you do it, it's an exciting thing for us in the city and, as you can see, for the mayor. For the mayor for the day is an exciting thing for him, too. There's a presentation for, oh, Irma Padilla. Is she here?
Yes, she is.
There you are. Irma, come on up. Stand at the podium. We have this presentation to make for you. We're appreciative of your service for the city and we have a proclamation for you. In recognition and appreciation upon her retirement, Irma Padilla, after 10 years of service to the City of solving, whereas the City of solving owes a debt of gratitude for the dedicated service Irma Padilla has provided the city and community for a decade, whereas during her tenure with the city, Irma provided custodial service and great customer service to our tourists and residents alike. After 10 years of dedicated service, Irma performed very well as a custodian. Whereas Irma had an excellent city ambassador answering a multitude of questions from our tourists every day, whereas Irma represented the city in a positive manner and was regularly seen driving her club car around town with a smile. And whereas during her tenure with the city, Irma also worked for the position of maintenance worker one and assisted in tree work, pavement marking, and facility repair. And whereas after 10 years, Irma is retiring with the longest-serving custodian for the City of solving. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Richardson, on behalf of the solving city council and staff, express our thanks and appreciation to Irma Padilla and wish her well in her retirement and future endeavors.
Thank you. Hopefully, they're watching. I want to thank all of those that I work with and had the privilege to work with. Very interesting and also very, what would be the word, exciting. I also want to thank my family, my daughter and my grandson for all their support. They were always behind me. They always loved seeing me drive around my little car with the lights. And I want to thank for all those, especially Sandra Featherston, because she was excellent in trying to get my, get me back in to even go more years. But thank you very much for this honor. I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Irma. Congratulations. We're on to city managers' report.
Just one thing, and I don't recall if I did this last meeting, but one of our employees passed the 10-year mark, and that was Julie Glendening in our financial department. So I did? Well, she gets a double billing on that.
Well, she's worth it.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thanks.
We're ready for public comment, written or verbal. At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Let's check this. Oh, yes, there's one. Fred, we're going to cover, the water softener agreement is in the consent calendar, so you'll have to speak to both your public input and the consent calendar item unless we, you know, that's what we do, talk about the consent calendar items.
I intend to pull that item.
Do we have, should we have public speaking at that time then?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's start, well, there's a couple in here. There's massage ordinance, too, so that the public is wanting to talk about. So we'll have to break that out also. Okay, we'll start with Fred Koval. Okay, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Fred Koval, solving. As I have done in previous public inputs, tonight, I'm going to share with the city updates. And there's three now tonight. The first of them is associated with the drought for the United States. And we're not too far dissimilar from Alaska. Our area is just a lot bigger. And what it shows is that for the next three months, the drought is certain. That's the forecast. The second one I'd like to share with the city is precipitation. Looking a little better, it's got a white area. It's EC, means equal chance of rain or no rain for the next three months. And finally, the heat. Next three months, it shows that we're not quite as bad as the area a little bit to the east and south of us, but nevertheless, it is not normal. So I expect that the lake will be very iffy at most as to whether or not our river wells will be able to be pumped after about two or three months.
Thank you, Fred. I have no other general public comment. Does anyone else wish to speak at this time? Okay, on to council comments and requests. Would you like to start, Ms. Jameson?
I really don't have anything to say.
Mr. Deuce.
No comment from me either.
Mr. Skid.
I'll just make my report on the Kachuma. It's now down over 106 feet below full at about 14,300 plus or minus acre feet in the lake, which is about 7% of capacity considering full is 193,000 acre feet. So as Mr. Koval pointed out, very little chance of water being released out of the lake this next year to recharge our river aquifer because it's actually, if somebody wants to go up there and take a look, it's actually getting down to the point where the outlet that is they use to drain the water down the river is getting, if it's not above the surface of the lake, it will be fairly shortly. If somebody wants to go up, if you go up and take a look from the vista that overlooks the dam, there is a little barge that is, normally utilizes the flexible pipe which allows the water to be drawn out at the most favorable weather. It's currently sitting on something because it is not floating in the water. It is sitting on something, not quite high and dry, but it's definitely not floating in the water like it's supposed to be. So hopefully, we'll get the rain and, but you can wish in one hand and do something else on the other hand and see what happens first. Anyway, that's my comments for the day.
Mr. Zimmerman.
I only have one comment. It was hot today.
Mr. Obvious.
That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Jameson.
I just have a question of the attorney. If I have a request of something to be placed on the agenda in the future, is this the time to do it or can I do it during committee report?
Actually, you can do it at any time.
Okay.
Because the Brown Act allows any council member to talk about their activities or bring up something that might come on a future agenda at any time. The organization set forth in the agenda is for your convenience.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one comment. I think that we have to remember Danish days. It was a very successful Danish days. And I want to thank the Danish Days Foundation and committee for the efforts that they did in putting on the Danish days. It was, it was a hot one, but it turned out to be very well done. With that, we'll go on to correspondence received by the city council. Anybody want to make any comments on the correspondence received by city council? I guess not. On to approval of the agenda as presented. Does anybody want to change anything with the agenda?
We did have a request by the applicant on 5F to continue that item.
Right, yeah, I'll pull that under consent counter. All right. No comments on the changing of the agenda and on to the city council minutes of September the 12th. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions to those minutes? If so, can I have them, or either that or a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Abstain. Pass. On to the consent agenda. Item 6F is asked, the petitioner asked for a continuance of that, so we'll move that on to another meeting. And does anybody want to pull any particular items from the consent agenda?
The one about the soft water.
That is, oh, that's item C? Any others? We have comments on the massage agenda, so I'm going to ask to be pulled, pull that one, B. Is that it? Would you read the consent agenda items B and C, please?
Where's the massage? Item 6C, introduction for first reading by title only, a proposed amendment to Title Nine, Chapter Two, revising the sewer code to add residential water softener restrictions. And, I'm sorry, item 6B, second reading by title only, a proposed amendment to Title Four, Chapter 10, amending regulations for massage establishments.
Got it. Okay. I have a, first item I'm going to pull is item B. Is there any discussion or comments or presentation on item 5B, 6B?
Would you like a short staff report? We can have Arlene come up and give a short staff report on it.
Mayor, members of the city council, this is a second reading of a proposed amendment to Title Four, Chapter 10, amending the massage establishment regulations. And the state law was amended in 2005, and staff had brought forward some changes for the council's consideration to basically put back local control for requiring any sort of certification and issuing business certificates to the city. And council had deliberated on the item and asked that staff come back with a section that would authorize the city manager to issue business certificates to those persons who have had a valid solving business certificate on or before June 27 of 2011 without the California Association of Massage Therapy Council's certification. The basis for this is that testimony from several massage therapists in our community have indicated that while these massage professionals had their license at a time when there was a lower amount of hours required of education, they currently don't meet the standard the CAMTC is requiring. And however, there may have been a desire on the part of the council to allow these people to continue to practice in the City of solving. At our last meeting, we asked for some information on the CAMTC, and that was forwarded to you, and therefore, we're bringing this back for your consideration. And that concludes my report. We're available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Staff report. Seeing none, then we'll go to public comment. Monique Golis.
Hello. If it's all right with the council, she would like to go first.
Well, she being Joni Shealy?
Jeannie Shelly.
Jeannie Shelly? Please. That's okay.
I talked to you about this. I'm Jeannie Shelly, and I'm from solving, Buellton. And we talked about the CAMTC before. They started in 2009. They are a nonprofit organization, is not required by the state of California for us to be a part of them. So when I went to school, none of this was in order. They, at one point, apparently went into a magazine from the one lady that I work with. She has their certificate, but she was grandfathered into it without having to do any of the licensing, proper licensing that they are requiring. So I asked how she got it. She said they were in a magazine. They made a statement that they were going to be bringing this to the public and that every massage therapist would be notified. Well, there was a ton of people that were not. So none of us knew about any of these new requirements that they were bringing in. When you guys decided to change all this, it changed a lot of us looking at our hours and what we're going to do because I was one of those that had the lower hours and we didn't, I've been in the business for over 10 years now and haven't, and a lot longer. I've been in the beauty business for over 35. So it was, you know, me going back to school at 62 and spending $1,600 or more. And so I went to them and asked them, would they be willing, since we, not a lot of us didn't hear about all this, would they be willing? And I sent all my information into them. It's cost me about $275 to do all this. I had to get fingerprinted, pictures, everything. And would they be willing to grandfather us in? For the ones that didn't hear it, they are not even budging. They're not even giving me my $150 back with the certificate. Now, with them being a nonprofit organization, not state certified, not required by the state, I don't see how they can get away with that. So, and we, as licensed massage therapists, we carry insurance in case of an accident or anything that happens. So we're very aware of our environment, of what our requirements are. So it's unfortunate that there are several bad apples in the bunch that spoil it for a lot of people that are really educated and really want to move forward in this business. So we have a lot of women that, you know, are not going to be able to work if we get pushed into this because I'm looking at retiring in a couple of years. I'm hoping to, but, you know, I opened my business a few, well, three, three years ago here, and I have several girls that work in there, and they all make sure that their licenses are up to date, that we are required by what you guys want for us. And you guys come in and we make sure that our shop is what you guys want. So we want to comply and we want to work with you on this. So whatever you can do to help us.
Do you have a business license in the city?
Yes, I do.
Well, you're grandfathered in.
Yes. I am grandfathered in, but there's going to be a lot that are not going to meet the criteria.
Well, that's a requirement that if they take out a business license after the date of this ordinance, then they will have to be, well, they will have to have the 500 hours.
Right, right. Well, the only reason why that 500 is being required is through them. And there's no state certification saying that we have to do that. So, and I checked with the company. I mean, I'm willing to go to Sacramento and find out why they are allowing them to come in and put this pressure on us. And I understand the city wants 500 hours. Well, that means a lot of these girls, when the schools don't require 500 hours, they're going to have to go back to school. So, you know, that's something to be looking into all the schools, you know, and finding out, you know, what are the requirements of a massage therapist at this point, you know? Maybe they have bumped it up to 500 hours, which is great, but it's a lot more money, too, when they do that. So, you know, there's a lot of girls out there that are, you know, trying to get through school and working second jobs and stuff like that, too. So, not just speaking for me because I'm kind of on my, I'm done almost, you know, but for the ones that are coming in, I know it's going to be hard for them. And I know a lot of them, so I just want it to be fair for them, too. So, anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got a question. You've been doing this for a lot of years.
A while, yes.
How did you get started?
My daughter got me involved. She's a massage therapist.
Okay. Did you take classes?
I went to school. I went to a school down in Santa Barbara that is certified by the state. They have to be.
Okay, so you have a certificate?
I have a certificate, yes.
Okay. And that is through the state?
No.
Or is it through the school?
Through the school. You have, there's several ways you can go. You can go with just a certificate, or if you decide you want to be like a massage therapist for sports therapy or something like that, there's more hours required for that. So you can stop at a certain level, and money is a big issue there, too. So I stopped at just the certification. Now, you can bump it up and become a licensed massage therapist through the state of California. But we have to take anatomy, and, I mean, you don't get away with nothing when you go to school. I mean, I was three and four hours of driving down until 10 o'clock at night, 10:30 coming home.
Okay, so, so anyway, you got a certificate from the school, from a school.
And then I'm allowed to take.
And is that typical of anybody that wants to be in the business?
Yeah. Even, I'm also a licensed nail technician, and that's 350 hours. That's more than my license for my massage, but I did that, too. So I've been to several schools, paid the money to do it all. I take extra classes when I want to learn something else, and those classes aren't cheap. They're five, $600, sometimes $1,000. It just depends on what you want to learn.
Do you, do you have to go up, go back for any recertification from any of these?
Not at this point. But if I want to up my license and want to become, you know, learn more of a certain area, I can do that. I have that option. I go to conventions every year and take classes and just to learn, you know, and I like education, so.
So you do have, you have a license, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And what's the licensing authority on that?
What do you mean, the license? It's through my school.
Okay, so it's, the school is your licensing authority.
Because they are licensed through the state. Yeah, they are licensed through the state of California. That's why this company is not licensed through the state of California.
Okay, okay. So in a roundabout way, then, through the school, you have a license roundabout from the state of California?
Yes. I would, I would actually, well, I would have to go to, if I wanted to up my license and become like a massage therapist, I would have to go for more hours and I would have to take, I would have to take the state certification.
Okay.
Now, I did that for my manicuring because I had to go to the state board because it's the Board of Cosmetology and Barbering you have to do. So, and you have to take, you know, classes and everything. But with, through the school, everything's through that and it's all sent to their state, you know, through the school. So you can't be a school without being through the state. Now, they're actually being, starting to be forced to comply with these guys. And they, because they see that these guys are trying to go towards that, to where they can be state certified. So, I mean, it's, they're kind of working that way, but it's kind of going in the back door to do it and pushing a lot of people in places that they're not ready for.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Monique?
Greetings, council member and mayor. My name is Monique Golis. And what I'd like to speak about specifically is reciprocity with other states. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about my work and myself so you can get maybe an example. And I, and there's a handout there so you can follow along because I'm just going to speed through it because it's a lot of data for a short amount of time, and I wanted to make sure that I left time for questions. So I'm going to set myself a timer. Please set timer for three and a half minutes.
I can't set a timer for a specific time. I can set the amount. Set the 3:00 P.M.
I guess you got four and a half.
Okay. So studies show healing time from surgery accidents and chronic nerve damage, addiction issues, pain from habitual poor posture, et cetera, are successfully treated through appropriate. appropriate body work. My role specifically is in implementing specific body work recommended by the patient's physicians and treatment team. In addition, my own assessment measures and therapeutic techniques have proven to be deeply nutritive for patients of all kinds. For over 25 years, I have worked alongside doctors, osteopaths, chiropractors, as well as addiction specialists, to aid in balancing the body and the mind. So then I have, I've gone through a brief overview of some of the doctors and people that I've worked with. I've worked with Dr. Tom Raven, originator of prolotherapy used worldwide in healing ligament injuries for all athletes and on the Olympic level. I've worked with Dr. David Luce, Harvard M.D., founder of Circle Health in Boulder, Colorado. Dr. Luce and our team of practitioners worked in concert resolving many patient issues. Dr. Keith Swan, also I worked with in Boulder, Colorado, founded, he founded Swan Osteopathy Center, serving patients with chronic health issues in addition to patients recovering from strokes and personal injuries. I also worked with Al Rodriguez, director of Santa Barbara County's ADMHS, Alcohol, Drug and Mental Health Services, where we used auricular treatment, which is treatment of the ears, for withdrawal and management of cravings for participants in recovery from moderate to severe addiction. I also worked at Good Samaritan Nursing Home in Boulder, Colorado, with the treatment of hospice patients and AIDS patients using body balancing technique, which is something that I've developed. So the examples of implementing healing modalities that I'm trained in is Swedish massage, Shiatsu deep tissue work, reflexology, polarity work, Rolfing, Alexander Technique, Traeger Technique, Auricular Therapy, Watsu, meditation management for, in conjunction with resensitization modalities for stroke victims. So when people are coming out of their stroke, and they have some, there's usually some difficulty with integrating back the brain and the body, and there's all these techniques. Arnold Mendel was the, he was one of the originators of that technology and that school of intervention that I've used really effectively in many clinical settings. I carry up-to-date professional insurance for all techniques and modalities. Now, one of the things that I was sharing with her is that it may be appropriate to have the criteria be through precise insurances, because for me to get insurance for all these different modalities, and they're kind of newer, leading-edge modalities, I had to prove so many different things. And so a nonprofit organization, nonprofit doesn't usually mean nonprofit, there's money being made, and obviously this nonprofit is making money by trying to enforce a national standard, which I don't think really tracks, I don't think it measures necessarily what they want to measure. We want to measure, especially in our town, to have a high level of care for massage therapists, giving a high level of care to the people that come through here, the people that are, you know, recovering, the people that are getting older. We want to have really high-level massage therapists. And so I'm not sure if a nonprofit organization that's not really, I don't know, it just, it doesn't really track. So basically, what I'm saying is that they're, I'm coming from another state, and although I've lived here 10 years, I haven't practiced like full bore, because I have a little one. And so I'd like to do that. And I've worked for so many years in other states and other situations, and so now to come here and for that organization to say, okay, you have to do another 500 hours, I'm like, oh, I've been doing this, you know, since I've been knee-high to a grasshopper, and I've worked with some of the best in the nation as far as trainers and things like that. I don't know if it's really feasible or fair. And so I would, it would be my honor to work in this town with appropriate accreditation from you. And I know there are a lot of massage therapists who work here without appropriate credentials, and I think that sometimes that's where things kind of fall through the cracks. So my request is that I be allowed to work here as a professional, and so I'm not sure what hoops I need to jump through, but I would ask that a person's work history and the amount of experience they've also had be a part of looking at who is grandfathered in, who's not. Because it just doesn't, I mean, I understand there are people out there who've done 300 hours and have just gotten out of school or whatever. I mean, the amount of work that I've done has just been, I mean, I've published research, I've done, I've developed my own technique. It's like, it's a much huger body of work. And I don't know if I'd be, I don't think it's, it would be right to go back and do, I mean, I've been a teaching assistant for those programs. But I guess my point is that in the criteria of who gets to be allowed to work here, I think that the overall work experience and overall contribution to the field of massage therapy should also be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
There, I have no other speakers. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Anybody wish to talk? Any questions?
I have, I guess, a comment slash question, and I'm reading here where it's at the authority of the city manager to review credentials of therapists with less than 500 hours of education and waive the requirement. So is that part of the thing of look at the past of what they've done and?
Well, that was the concept. No, I think the last version, we added the date that you had had to be a continuing practice since 2011. So obviously, she wouldn't qualify for that if she's not had a business certificate since 2011. So that was the council, I think, added that, one of the versions before, so.
Gotcha.
Any other comments?
I have a question and comment. Currently, what is the requirements that is actually required by the state of California for a massage therapist? Is there an actual amount of training that is currently required by the state of California? And what is that?
Right now, it's 250, and it's going up. They're looking at possibly breaking it up to 500. It depends on the state.
Okay. For those who couldn't hear, it was 250 hours going up. Next question is...
I think he's asking the question of staff, aren't you? He's asking the question of staff.
Staff?
We were on the last question, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. What is the actual state requirement for a massage therapist? To be licensed?
To my knowledge, the way the state has it set up is the schools have to be certified by the state, and they have to meet certain requirements, and I'm not an expert on that as far as how that, what the requirements are through the state, but the schools are certified by the state as opposed to directly certifying therapists. And I do have a little context I want to add to this, because this isn't a situation where staff has proposed a change in the rules to impose the CAMTC. That requirement was put in in 2011 by the then-city council. And at that time, the people who had existing business licenses in Solvang and were legally performing massage therapy were given, I think it was either two or three years, to come into compliance with the CAMTC standards. And what we've, and then there's two changes that have taken place. One is the state rechanged the laws to give you more control over locating CAMTC therapists. In other words, your zoning rules now can apply to them, because the state has given a special status to CAMTC-certified therapists. And before, we couldn't put our zoning laws on them, and we also couldn't apply our traditional business license removal rules to them. Well, the state changed that so that we can impose our zoning rules and we can have our business license rules applied to the CAMTC people. And that's why staff brought this change back, which is to give you more local control over that aspect of the license. Through discussion, we were directed to, instead of sticking with the old rule that you had, which is people had to come in compliance, you wanted to grandfather anybody who had a license back in 2011 when the standard went in. That being said, Solvang doesn't give people permission to be massage therapists. That's governed by state law, whether it's CAMTC or other. So you would not have the power to decide that a particular person with all their experience is licensed to be a massage therapist, that the state decides that. We can do zoning, and we can do business license. It is within your power to decide that you want to let, a previous version that has been before you, that you want to let anybody who is licensed properly through the state functions perform therapy. That was not the policy decision in 2011, but that doesn't mean you have to stick with that policy decision. It's your ordinance to do with what you want. So you can leave it the way it is now. You can change the policy and say that you don't want to require CAMTC for anybody, just same rules apply to everybody. Or you could stick with this latest version, which is people who are licensed prior to the CAMTC process being put in. It is a, it is something that's been created by the state. The state gave CAMTC therapists stronger protections against your zoning ordinances and other ordinances than other types of therapists. So, but you can change the ordinance any way you see fit.
So, now, is the C A M T, or what, now, is that the group that has raising the standard to the 500 hours?
Yes.
So, and, but it's...
And so the state has given them greater protections against local control than other therapists.
But they are still a private, are they, are they, is it a...
It's not like the state bar that governs me, that although it's a state mandated, you can only get a license or practice law through the state bar. It's slightly different.
So it's like the state is trying to give somebody a monopoly on something?
Yeah, which is, I mean, that's what the state does for lawyers and for lots of other people.
Barbers?
Yeah. And they just haven't done it yet with massage therapists, and they went from, if we called where they were, point A, and where the state bar is, point E, that they decided not to go from point A to point E. They went somewhere in between, and they bollocked it all up with all these goofy rules that we're all having to deal with.
Okay. Now they're completely, totally confused?
Yeah, well, and to make it worse, part of the impulse statewide back in 2011 for going to the stricter rules and basically requiring people be CAMTC certified was perceived bad conduct on the part of people who otherwise had licenses or maybe didn't have licenses. And so part of the theory was that you needed to go to this new standard in order to deal with bad conduct. Now, that's just theory, that was policy back in 2011. That was the driving force behind that decision-making, both at the state level and at the local ordinance levels.
So the standard comment, the road to hell is paved with good intentions?
Yes. And mine are always good, but I'm heading in the same place everybody else.
May I ask you a question? So you have an option to go back to where we were at one point, which was, we didn't have the business certificate at 2011 trigger in there. We just said the city manager had the option to review the experience, that if it was less than 500, didn't have CAMCT certification, could approve and authorize a business certificate to be issued to that massage therapist. So that was a version that you saw several meetings ago, but there was a concern, I think someone spoke at that time, that the 500 is required, you should have that, and so the council had us go in between and say, well, if you had a certificate in 2011, you were grandfathered in, we'll continue that grandfathering clause, which was in your old code, was in the code before. So you do have that option to go back. That was, I think, council member Zimmerman's question is, could the city manager approve someone who didn't have a business certificate? And the way it's written right now, no.
You know, it was my, it was my impression that we were going to write it so that anybody that had a current massage license in the city would be grandfathered in, not one that was backdated to July 11.
There was discussion, but the council vote was the language that's in front of you. Now, this is only to you on second reading, so you can still change it, but the actual council vote didn't agree with that policy recommendation.
Well, it was my intention that we grandfather in current business licenses and then start the 500 requirement for new business licenses.
I understand, but you need, okay, well, that's...
But that's what we, that's what we're doing.
That's what this one says. A grandfather's existing business license, new business license would have to meet the new standard.
What does July of 11 have to do with it?
That's, that grandfathers everybody who was already working in Solvang at the time the new standards were put in place from the state of California. That's when we first addressed this. We're not, this isn't the new standard we're imposing now, this, the requirement of having a CAMTC certificate. That was imposed in 2011. All staff suggested was changing the zoning rules and applying our regular business license revocation standards to, that now can apply to the CAMTC people. But the issue has popped up, as it was in 2011, about people who are affected by it. But so it's, you aren't imposing a new standard now.
Yes.
But you have the ability to soften that standard if you want to, it's just we haven't had three votes to that effect yet.
So for me to understand that clearly, what we may vote on tonight is that we will grandfather current business, massage business license holders to the, to the new, they'll be grandfathered in. Any business licenses for massage therapists after this ordinance goes into effect are required to have the 500 hours.
That's almost right. There might be somebody out there who has a business license that didn't have it in 2011, when the original standard was imposed, because originally, they were supposed, everyone was supposed to come into compliance over the course of a few years. So you have to have had a valid business license since 2011 in order to be grandfathered in, according to the language that's before you tonight.
So somebody, so somebody who started their business in, say, 2012 or 2013 would not be grandfathered?
Right, well, and they wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been proper to issue them a business license in 2013 if they weren't CAMTC certified.
So if they had...
But this is a human endeavor, so it's possible that somebody got a business license out there that we shouldn't, I don't know that there is, I'm just saying that...
Was that the 250-hour license or the 500-hour license?
Starting in 2011, to get a business license, we required people to have the 500-hour license.
That's clear. Is that clear to you, Ms. Jameson?
Yes, but I don't like it.
Well?
I mean, I look at this lady's, I guess I'd have to make sure that all of these are real, but I look at her qualifications, and she's probably overly qualified to be a massage therapist. But she doesn't meet, you don't meet the criteria, is that right? She doesn't have the 5... Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
My suggestion is to make something additionally to reciprocity with other states.
You don't have the power to do that.
Because when I was, when I was working in Colorado and I've worked in Ohio...
I know, you have to talk to the state legislature about that.
About reciprocity?
Because the state is in charge of who gets licensed, not city councils.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm kind of driving towards is that there needs to be some fluidity to raise the standard in general, and if we make it so tight only to local people, and that if you move here, even if you have, you know, whatever, I have like 15 years, 25 years of experience to then go back and do these...
I'm sympathetic to your cause, but that's the way it is. When you come to California, you have to follow California rules.
But I'm not...
If this, to get a business license requires certain things to get a business license or a certification, then that's a requirement, state requirement.
Well, that's not what the state is saying, though, that we can't offer her a business license.
No, what the state's saying is, well, I want to be clear, what we can't do is give her a license that she's not qualified to. Our business license is just the ability to do business. So if my cousin, my cousin Greg, who doesn't have a license to practice law, came here and said, I want a business license from you, you could give him a business license. That doesn't make him a lawyer, it's still illegal to practice law for him. So if our regulations are complying with the state law in this regard, you... you can't confer upon somebody the ability to engage in massage therapy as defined by the state unless they meet the state's rules. We can only zone them and regulate business license for those people who are properly authorized by state law to engage in massage therapy. We don't have the power to expand on who can engage in massage therapy. The state is in charge of that.
So one question there, if I may interrupt. Is there, I'm not sure if there is a congruence between this nonprofit organization that wants to sort of control the hours and that and the state requirements for a business license. I'm not, I'm not clear if this company, this nonprofit, is kind of coming in and taking over the standardization nationally or whatever. Is that true? So I just, I'm asking the council if there's a correlate there.
The CAMTC was created by state legislation. It's not a State Department, but it was created by the state.
So it's not a national organization?
I don't, that I don't know. I don't know, but it's, C A M C, it's a California massage, so I doubt it's a national organization.
Right, that's my point, which is that because I've done the bulk of my work in other states, then those people like myself who want to move here and they want to, I would love to make a contribution to this community, how can I do that then? Because the bulk of my trainings have been internationally and nationally, not in this state.
There may be a possibility that they may allow your previous work experience to grant you that certificate without actually attending 500 hours of classwork. That would be between you and that organization.
And that's still, my question is still, the legality or the-
The legality's been set by the state, that they recognize this organization as a certification process. And that we're recognizing that also, and that we're setting it for 500 hours. And those people who have business licenses within the city will keep those licenses without having to do the 500 hours. So if you want to practice massage therapy in the city-
I do.
You must, you must get that 500-hour certificate. However, you obtain it from that organization is between you and that organization.
I just want to point out that this organization is a money-making organization that wants to have, to sell more and more re-ups to their license.
I understand that, but the state says, hands are tied.
Question, are you licensed in the state of California?
I'm not. My, all my licensures happened in Ohio and Colorado. And those stipulations, and that whole rigor that's in Colorado is like insanely difficult. I mean, I did, I did over 1,000 hours. And then I did additional, you know, 250, 300 hours for all these different, all the different things that I have on my list there. And so it's been a lifelong of training for me. I haven't, I didn't move to the state until 10 years ago and I was being a mom for a lot of that time. So that's kind of my question there. I'm sure that I'm not the only one like this. And, you know, I've really done top-flight work for, you know, many, many years and-
There's no question in our mind about that.
Well, thank you.
It's just the requirements that are set forth, that you've got to have that certificate from that organization. And as I said, how you obtain that from that organization is between you and that organization.
Right, and that's what I was pointing out, is that that organization is-
Do you have to actually do the classwork or they can recognize your previous-
They're very motivated to get you to buy and they want to require you to buy. And so that's kind of, you know, a regulatory body, I don't feel like is a business. And so that's where it kind of like pats the cat the best way.
May I say, we've given you every opportunity to explain your position?
Thank you very much for your time.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion? I'll make the motion. I'll make the staff recommendation as the motion. Move staff recommendation, can I have a second?
As much as I hate to second it, because I think the people are getting the short end of the stick from the state, but it's the way the state law is currently enacted. I'm going to have, give us a second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Councilmember Deuce?
Sorry.
Councilmember Jamison?
No.
I didn't, I didn't vote yet.
Councilmember Deuce?
No.
Councilmember Jamison?
No, again.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
No.
That motion failed. Is there another motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we add in city manager discretion if somebody has, if they're licensed in the state of California and they have less than 500 hours, but they have the credentials outside of the state of California, I guess, or whatever it would be, or-
So eliminate the 2011 business certificate statement?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Explain that to me, what the motion means.
So Brad will be able to allow a business license in the city of solving if the massage therapist is licensed in the state of California, but doesn't meet the 500 hours.
So that should be, that should be up to the city manager's discretion as to who gets the license in that case?
I think it always is, but it just-
Just a business license.
Business license. So he, so he has to determine the eligibility of the masseuse?
Well, there's the minimum of the 250 hours and maybe they have 300 or 350, or there might be some additional hours, but not necessarily needing the requirement of the full 500.
What this does not do, though, does not answer the question of somebody who has an out-of-state qualifications that does not have-
But we don't have any, we can't do it.
And we don't have any right to do anything on that.
We can't answer that.
So.
We can't.
No, we can't.
So you want to set the standard back to 250-hour requirement?
I think, just to be clear, I wouldn't get mired in the debate over how many hours, because the way the process works is the schools have to be certified and the schools have their own rules. And so as long as they're, as long as they are properly, they may properly engage in massage therapy according to state law and they can, and can prove that to the city manager, the city manager can give them a business certificate.
That's his normal function on other licenses then also?
He doesn't even engage in that level of scrutiny on a lot of other licenses. Most business certificates are over the counter. I didn't have to, I have my bar card with me, but I didn't have to show my bard card to get my business license.
Is that, is that an additional burden on the city manager?
You know, no, it's not. I don't, I don't think we're going to have that many coming in looking for it, yes.
So the motion is to delete the date of-
You know what, this is actually going to become a first reading. We're no longer in a second reading, you've made pretty significant change to the ordinance. So I think what we're going to need to do is bring this back, or do you want to call it the first reading? I guess that's a legal question.
I would prefer to call it the first, to have a new first reading tonight, so to change the language. The motion was to change the language as directed.
As to thee.
Staff understands what that means.
Right, you want, you want California-certified school proof of that, that they've gone to California-certified massage therapy school. That's correct. And CAMCTC would still be allowed because that's in our code.
Oh, sure, it just wouldn't be required.
Okay.
Are you saying any massage, certified massage?
State-certified.
State-certified massage school. Are there many of those? There are many. Thank you. All right, the motion's been made to eliminate that date and the rest of the ordinance stays the same? Is that correct?
In addition of any state-certified school.
In addition of state-certified, so we delete before June 27th, 2011. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Because we can't do other state, yeah.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, that passed with a 5-0. Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate that. Help us make the decision. I'm sorry, but that's-
Can I ask a clarification?
Actually, the deed is done.
I just want to understand, so now I can't practice in this state because my credentialing comes from another state. Is that true?
You have to have a state-certified certificate.
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So then I couldn't work in the city?
Not in, not until you get a business license.
And you can't get a business license?
You can't get a business license without a state-certified.
Your, your, your best bet I would see would be possibly to check with a certification school that will take a look at what you have done and say, hey, you've done more of this, we will give you, we will-
Most schools don't do that unless you buy a certain amount of their class.
But the other, the other alternative is to find another city that is not as strict as we are. I hate to say it that way, but-
Yeah, my daughter, we-
Well, I understand that, but, but we set up the ordinance, we're setting up the ordinance to cover every, all the contingencies that we can think of right now, except state importation.
Right, and so I think that that piece is pretty important, because you've got a lot of really top people coming in.
Well, it's a state requirement.
And the state does not have, the state does not have reciprocity on this one here, unfortunately.
So we're going to go on to the next item, which is item 5C, I believe it is. Thank you.
6C.
6C. Used to be 5. Could you read that, please?
Item 6C, introduction for first reading by title only. Proposed amendment to Title IX, Chapter Two, revising the sewer code to add residential water softener restrictions.
Staff report?
Did you want a staff report, or I know councilmember Jamison pulled this with a question?
Are you going to make, we have, we have a public comment on that, so we better have a staff report.
Before Matt starts, I just want, the main reason I pulled this was that so everybody understood what is happening. Okay, and sometimes when you read it, you don't necessarily understand what it says. I mean, I understand what's going on, but people have asked me and I've tried to explain. Okay, that's why I pulled the item.
Sure, thank you very much, Mayor Richardson, councilmembers, Matt Vanderland and your public works director and city engineer. And councilmember Jamison, thank you for that clarification, so I'll be sure to touch on that. So as was discussed at the last city council meeting, basically kind of the bottom line is we're having difficulty at our wastewater treatment plant meeting our sodium chloride discharge limits. And what happens is when we use more local groundwater, which we're doing for the last four years because of the drought, because there's less state water available, the local groundwater is higher in TDS or mineral content, primarily calcium and magnesium. And so because of that, that's what people call hard water. So because of that, water softeners are running kind of like double duty, so to speak, compared to if there was a lot of state water that's lower in calcium and magnesium. But now we've got this local groundwater, it's higher in calcium and magnesium, it's hard water. So there's more softening occurring with the residential water softeners. There's more brine discharge to the sewer system, which ends up at the treatment plant. Contrary to anyone's misunderstanding, the wastewater treatment plant has no capability to remove sodium and chloride. It's in the ionic state and to do so would be very costly, like we discussed last time. So several years ago, the city council implemented water softener restrictions for commercial properties, or basically all properties other than residential properties. And with those restrictions, the canister-type or portable exchange tank water softeners were still allowed, but the salt-based self-regenerating water softeners were banned. And that's what was for commercial or everything other than residential. So now what we're proposing is to grandfather in all of the residential water softeners, or specifically all of the salt-based self-regenerating water softeners. But going forward from, I believe it's December 1st is the date recommended, going forward from that date, we would not allow any new salt-based self-regenerating water softeners that sends all the brine to the wastewater treatment plant that then ends up into our groundwater basin. We would continue to allow, as we do now, the canister-type portable exchange tank units. But just from that date, December 1st, 2016 going forward, we would no longer allow in the city any new salt-based water softeners. So what that also-
Just let me interrupt, okay. That means if your water softener takes, stops working, you cannot replace it.
Correct, you could service, if it's serviceable and, you know, it just needs to be repaired, then you can continue to do that. But if you're going to go purchase a new unit, if it's completely failed and you have to get a new unit, yeah, that would not be allowed with this, with this proposed ordinance. So, and in addition, at the last meeting, we talked about a rebate program. And we received public comment about the hardness, complaints about the hardness of the city's water. And the city council directed staff to proceed with the study that would look at wellhead water softening. We'll look at a variety of different alternatives. One of the alternatives that we would be looking at is just simply purchasing additional state water or a combination, instead of putting water softening at four wellheads, maybe just one, plus buying a little bit of additional state water when it's available. And when I say purchasing additional state water, I'm not talking about the millions of dollars buying capacity in the pipeline. I'm just talking about during wet years, there's a lot of extra state water available. We can get it at reasonable cost and then serve more state water, which will then trigger the, less water softening and less brine discharge to the wastewater treatment plant. So we'll look at all, variety of different alternatives. But, so with tonight's staff report, we're asking for a budget adjustment of $20,000 to undertake that study.
And then the rebate is off the table?
For now, for now, yeah. And the idea is, once we complete the study, we'll incorporate those findings back into the water and sewer rate study. And you, the city council will have this opportunity to make a decision. Do you want to include that in the rate study, do you want it out? And the rate study is looking at the next five years. So you can make that decision, kind of how you want to proceed. And at that time also, you can make a decision, give staff further direction on the rebate program. The rebate program's all set up, it's ready to go, basically, unless you want to make any revisions to it. But it's completely, from the staff's perspective, 100% ready to be implemented, just needs to be funded. And so that's, that's how we're understanding your direction.
Is there any questions in the staff report? Thank you, Matt, I guess not. I have a couple of speaker slips, Fred Koval? Yep? Followed by Ken Stetz?
Somebody leave their stuff here?
McElvanian staff report. Mayor and city council members, Fred Koval. When this was presented two weeks ago, there were some serious problems with the whereas's. Tonight, the whereas's have disappeared. However, the staff report still has some real, real big issues. And it has to do with definitions. If you look on page two of four of your staff report, on the second paragraph, second last line, it says, "The affluent potential to result in gradual degradation of the San Ones Uplands groundwater basin." And I want to know how the affluent gets into the San Ones Uplands basin, which is way east of that. And you've got an alluvian barrier that prevents any water from getting back into that basin. So that's a very big inaccuracy. The next paragraph down, closer to the bottom, about four lines- The next paragraph down, closer to the bottom, about four lines up, major lines up, it says, "The use of sodium chloride, potassium chloride contribute to an undesirable concentration of chloride and TDS." No, it doesn't. The water softeners, the salt do not contribute to the TDS. TDS should be stricken. Let's go through the scenario. The Public Works Director says there's approximately salt regenerative softeners in the city, six hundred of them. And let's say, just for the heck of it, tank replacements are about four hundred, gives you a thousand. We've got about two thousand connections. So, the people that can't afford soft water are passing the TDS from the wells straight through, through the sewer system to the wastewater treatment plant. That's where the TDS is coming from, not from water softeners or not from tank softeners. It's an exchange, calcium ions for sodium ions, pretty simple. So, now, when I go to page three of four, for some reason, in the first paragraph, about three lines from the bottom of the, of the page three of four, first paragraph, the word "uplands" disappears, it's not there. So, now you've created a new definition, San Inez Groundwater Basin. I don't know what that is. Same way down, the second paragraph down, fifth line down, San Inez Groundwater Basin. Should have the word "uplands" in there. So, that's the conflict I have with this. You need an accurate staff report, no inaccuracies. So, that's got to get fixed, that's got to get changed. You City Council members are being misled, and I don't like it. Also, what I don't see in here, or you discussed about, and that is, what are you going to do with CSD? How are you going to solve that problem? That's got to be addressed first, that's got to be fixed first before you pass anything. You can't just lay the blame on the city residents. The same set of regulations you lay on the city has to be laid on CSD. And what is CSD doing? They want to add. They want to add to this thing. Why? You guys got a lot of work to do here before anything gets passed.
Thank you, Fred. Ken Stetz. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Stites.
Hi, my name's Ken Stites. I'm the current President of the Pacific Water Quality Association, and our association represents the manufacturers, suppliers, and dealers of water treatment systems. We wanted to, on behalf of our Board of Directors, to ask that you table this motion until we're able to sit down with staff, deal with some very, I guess, less draconic proposals other than a softener ban. There's numbers of different proposals that, that we have seen successful in reducing the chloride levels that softeners provide. But some, some of the issues that we have issues here with specifically Solvanes is that nowhere in the staff report, nowhere that we have seen, what are your current levels of total dissolved solids, chlorides, and sodiums in your water discharge? And then what are the goals that the Central Coast Regional Water Control Board's asking you to meet? We have not seen any, any numbers, no, no public information regarding those goals and your current levels. The other issue is the, that the state in two thousand and nine passed AB thirteen ninety-nine. And thirteen ninety-nine basically says this is what a community, a municipality, a water district, needs to go through in order to ban a water softener for residential. And what I have seen so far in the staff report is that those procedures have not been followed in this current reading of, of legislation. We haven't seen any finding by the Central Coast Regional Water Board on making the finding that if you do ban water softeners in residences, that you're going to meet those sodium chloride and TDS levels that they're asking you to meet. And they have specific timelines, like when the Regional Control Board goes to authorize a municipality to ban water softeners, they have to have a ten-day notice in order to say, City of Solvane, you are allowed, they're requesting to ban water softeners. In addition to that, after that hearing and that finding, there has to be a thirty-day finding period. Then, a City Council can put that on the agenda. Then, you have to wait thirty days after the first reading in order to pass a ban. So, there's, there's timelines that need to be followed, which we, we don't see that those were followed in, in this, this ordinance proposal. Also, we wanted to, we, we haven't seen any City of Solvane salt study that shows that really a softener ban would really do anything regarding the, the materials in your water. And just for the record, we wanted to, just in the record, state that there hasn't been one instance in California where there has been a ban that has followed the guidelines, not one instance, that the chloride levels and the, the levels that the Regional Control Board have set have ever been reached if a water ban was implemented. That, that data, that hard data has not been, is not, not there. But we did want to say there are other options available. We would love to sit down, our membership, as well as myself, would love to sit down with the staff and go over some of these options that aren't going to cost you twenty thousand dollars for a study or ban water softeners, but they will lower some of the chloride levels and TDS levels that you're trying to achieve. So, so with that, I, I just wanted to just put our membership, myself, out there that we would look forward to meeting with staff and, and the council members to go over, I think, I think some less drastic measures than a water softener ban. So, with that, that's, those are my comments for the record.
Thank you for that. Was there any other public discussion? Karen?
Good evening, Karen White, Solving Resident, candidate for Solving City Council. Excuse me, fighting something off here. I was very glad to hear this gentleman's proposal. I, I've been listening to this item come up a couple of times now, and, and I, I feel as though the whole thing has, has been put forward too soon without any types of, of studies. And having been the President of the Board of Trustees for ID one, I, the four years I was on that board, I don't think I ever heard us mention restricting the use of residential water softeners. I also want to point out that I feel that Matt's been put in kind of a bad, bad spot here, kind of been put on the spot a number of times, not having been able to prepare with, with accurate information to present. So, I think, I also think it's really premature, and you all really should table it and do more work and study on it.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Sitting down, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Somebody like to start?
I'll start. First, I'm going to like Karen's comment about ID one, not having a concern about water softeners. They really don't care about water softeners because they didn't have to treat the water. We're the ones who have to treat the water, a Community Services District will have to do that. And I had a discussion with our City Manager, and in regards to Mr. Koval's comment in regards about Community Service District, the original agreement that we have with Community Service District is that they have to meet our standards with their wastewater. So, it's one of those things, if Mr. Koval's wondering about that, they do have to meet our standards also. In regards to the gentleman from the professional, uh, uh, soft water industry, I'm not, I'm not that familiar with it, is, I don't know if it's an industrial organization. I'm assuming it is, it has to deal with water softener, water softening companies, companies that produce water softeners. And I, I'm going to assume that you do have some good input to put in, but, you know, it's one of those things that I'd like to see some more information on it. We have been going through this particular thing, problem with our water department, in particular, our wastewater, where we are having increased chlorides. And the state is, they are changing the rules as fast as we can try to meet the old rules, and we aren't meeting the new rules as it is, or the old rules as it is right now. And it's one of those things, they, we, we do have to go through and do something here fairly shortly. We are not banning water softeners. We are requesting that water softeners that are self-regenerating be phased out on that one there. And then, so the, the water softening business will still be alive and well, it's just going to be the replacement tanks or exchange tanks going back and forth. So, we're not, and we're not forcing people to take out their, banning their water softeners. We are requesting that, you know, they can have it, but when they do wear out is, they will, all, all, all things like that, like heating systems, air conditioning systems, they, they wear and tear over the years, they have to be replaced. These water softeners have to be replaced. And we are only requesting that at that time there, when they do die, that they go to the, uh, exchange tank. So, it's, I would like to hear some more from the information, but we do have a problem coming up with our water. And as the water, uh, we start throwing water out of our own wells, as Mr. Koval did mention, it is a hard water. We've had some wells that were extremely hard water, and they have, uh, to utilize the, our water. There's a lot of clear glass windows or class, clear glass shower doors. If you don't wipe them down after you take a shower, you end up getting spotted. And if you don't wipe them down in about six months, instead of a nice clear glass shower door, you're going to have a cloudy, obscure glass shower door. So, we do have water problems, and we do need to treat our water. But it's not, it's not that we are eliminating water softeners, we're just trying to eliminate a particular class of water softeners. So, it's, I think at this point here, it is justifiable to proceed with this ordinance. And that's my comments.
Any other comments?
I would, I would like to see the levels and the numbers, but if there is a problem, and, and I think this was my proposal last time, two weeks ago, was that the city treat the water. That way, we're not dependent on, on whether somebody has a water softener or not. If, if, if there, if there is a problem, if we are, um, not in compliance, this way, we know the problem is taken care of, if the city takes care of it. Just my thoughts, and I think that's basically what I said two weeks ago.
Are there any other comments?
I'd like to see us table this and see if we can at least entertain the association, and maybe there's a way where we can reduce the levels and not have to ban water softeners. It might be unnecessary when it comes down to it at the end of the day. If we can avoid it, we might as well avoid it.
If that's a motion to table it, I'll second it.
That's a motion.
We're not ready for the vote yet. It's my, it's my turn to talk. I, I want to ask the attorney, are we following the process, as the testimony said, following the state law? The process, the timetable, are we doing that correctly?
We're following the one that applies. We're, we're not trying to pass a, a total ban on water softening systems such that it would imply the, the rules about going to the State Water Board, et cetera. We're doing a different type of ordinance that it, it did have to have a study. That study was mentioned to you, it was done, was it two thousand twelve? Yeah. So, we, we have the appropriate study to do an ordinance that's before you. But remember, we're not proposing to ban all water softeners. There are cities that have successfully done that, we're just not proposing that. And I don't think that staff feels it's necessary at this time.
What's the staff's feeling on sitting down with the...
We serve at the pleasure of the council. So, if the council tells us that's what you'd like us to do, we're more than willing.
That's a fine answer. When do, can you do that tomorrow? Will you be in town tomorrow? You'll be in town tomorrow?
No, I, I can't do it tomorrow. I'm sorry. I got a doctor's appointment first thing in the morning, and we've got, my schedule's pretty booked with other meetings. But certainly would be interested to hear what he has, has to say. You know, we've had a number of engineers look at it, and I've never heard, you know, basically, you're taking thousands of pounds of salt from somewhere out of this valley, bringing it in to this valley, and dumping it here. It, it doesn't go away by magic, that's what you were doing. We're importing salt from somewhere, dumping it in our groundwater basin. So, and there are, there is connectivity. The, the wastewater treatment plant discharges into the percolation ponds, and that end up, ends up into the San Inez River underflow. But there's many areas along the San Inez River where the adjacent basin has connectivity with the, the river underflow. And I did want to clarify, correct one statement. Mr. Koval needs to listen to what he's saying. He said you, you exchange calcium and magnesium ions for sodium and chloride ions. So, it doesn't, and he's claiming it doesn't increase the TDS. Well, it does, total dissolved solids includes all those type of ions. So, if you just take out two and replace them with two others, it's, it's the same. So, anyway. But I, I'd, I'd be definitely interested to hear what he has to say, you know? I'm always interested in learning, maybe he has great new information. I did have a company contact me about a technology that's in the, in the testing development stage right now. But, you know, that's years off. Anyway, so, we'd be happy to, to listen to whatever, you know, information he can provide, so.
Thank you, Matt.
I have one more thing to say. How I see this is we have the stuff going to the water treatment from San Inez, and then we have from Solving. Do we have a separate contract with the Chumash, with the reservation, or is that part of the San Inez?
They're, they're, they do own a portion through the CSD. They own a portion of the capacity in our plant, but they treat with their own packaged plant and, and, and retain it.
I've discovered today that the information is since they've opened their packaged plant, their influx of affluent to us has been dropped to minimum.
Yeah, so, do we have the numbers on where it's, you know, what, what are the numbers from that side versus ours? And then, the comparison and contrast on how much we're contributing to the treatment?
We do have some limited data. It's my, it's my understanding, first of all, that the wastewater treatment plant from the Chumash Casino has not been discharging any water for a couple of years into the San Inez Community Services District and reaching us. They have a really advanced wastewater treatment plant, they're producing recycled water, which they're using on their property for landscape irrigation. And the, the affluent from that is discharged to either a percolation pond or a creek or somewhere there adjacent to... to either a percolation pond or a creek or somewhere there adjacent to the reservation. And they are able to meet their discharge limits, is my understanding. We do get monthly reports from their wastewater treatment plant through the Community Services District. So we could research the exact numbers. As far as the San Andres Community Services District, we do have some limited data available. The salts concentration or the sodium and chloride concentration in their wastewater compared to ours is slightly less, but it's comparable.
We have a motion on the floor to table, table this particular item. Let's call a roll. Is there any other comment? Let's call a roll, please.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. I'd like to add that, though, that I'd like the representative from the soft water company to contact the city to make, to make an appointment to discuss his, his ideas and plans. Especially if it isn't going to cost us $20,000.
We will hold off, since it's tabled, we won't be doing the study until you readdress it.
Can we take a 10 minute?
Hey, Jim, do you want to just finish the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes, we do.
Since we haven't got that far.
Okay. Can, can we, is there anyone who wish to pull any more items from the consent calendar? Hearing none, can I have a motion accepting the balance of the consent calendar? Is there a second?
I'm seconding.
Is there, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yep.
Jameson?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. Now, can we take a break? Thank you. We'll go to item seven on return from the break. At five after, 10 after? 10 minutes. Meeting back to order. Item number seven, please.
Item seven, annexation studies, sphere of influence update and review of draft requests for proposals.
Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the discussion of the annexation study, which has been before the council on several other meetings. And tonight, we have this scheduled for general discussion regarding annexation to the city. In the past, we've reviewed the general plan policies for protection of agricultural lands surrounding our community. We've also noted that the city does have a resolution supporting preservation of the Greenbelt area. It's specific to the area between our western border and Buellton. And we also have prepared a draft RFP for the council's consideration for the annexation study. We're asking tonight that you review that and provide direction to staff. A couple of points I'd just like to refresh our memory on. The staff has estimated the cost of the study to be approximately $50,000. This did come up from about $35,000 with addition of areas to the east of the city and adjacent to the Mission. And on October 8th, the council discussed possibly adding some other areas in order to make the study more comprehensive. Two of the areas that were discussed were Janon Acres and Quail Valley, which are to the east of the community. And staff is recommending that these areas be studied separately from the parcels which were previously identified. And I'll put those maps up for you in a moment. Consideration of annexing developed and occupied properties such as these in the areas is very different from vacant land. It tends to become, it create a high level of public interest. And the staff feels that if these were added to the distinctly different study of vacant lands on the city's periphery, that the study could get bogged down in those areas. There, they should probably be two separate studies. So that's our recommendation regarding Janon Acres and Quail Valley. And today, we also wanted to point out again that we have not mailed notices to any property owners beyond the letter of interest that was previously sent. A draft request for proposals has been attached for your review and comment. And I, again, we're just asking for direction and whether or not you think the request for proposals is adequate. This concludes my staff report. And I will go ahead and flip through the maps for you. We also have a sphere map up there and one has been left at your seat. This is the area to the west, the area to the general northeast, and the Mission properties, and our sphere of influence map. So it's very easy for me to get back to any of these. So if they would be useful for you to look at a particular one, just please say so.
I have a question on the sphere of influence map. Particularly the area that is located on the west side of the city of solving. Does that include, yes, that one right there, does that include, I believe, the Buell Flat property and the solving billing supply property?
Yes, I believe it does.
Okay. And then the piece that goes to the east, that is, is that the Janon Acres area?
Yes.
So they are, they
They're already in our sphere.
They are already in our sphere of influence. Okay. Thank you.
On the western study area map, right there, we're, we're still missing the two parcels on the Croc property above one and three.
The north. Yes, you had indicated we'd add that last time, so we will.
Okay.
I have talked to the people, the Almo Pantato map, that own parcel 11 and 12 up there. And they both have expressed an interest. Number 12 has a new owner. Number 11 just did not get the mailing. So where it says that there's no interest or not responded to, they are, they are interested. And Arlene's going to make sure that she makes contact with those two people.
That's 11 and 12, Johnny?
Yes.
Is that item, is that the 12, is that the recently purchased by the Ranch Church? Is that the one?
Yes. It's been purchased by an individual.
For the
Partially.
Okay. So actually, north of the city boundary, it's, those are all agreeable, then?
Well, they're interested, they're interested. You know, who knows if they're going to be agreeable once they find out
Sorry.
The whole story.
Bad choice of words. Have you had any other contact with 14 and 15?
No.
Or 16?
The list remains unchanged from the last time.
Well, 14 and 50 said do not include.
Correct.
It's funny about 17.
It says letter came back.
Right. That's the other Paul Heron, surprise.
Well, we can try to work on that one.
Yes, unfortunately, the information we have to work off of is the assessor's role. And sometimes it takes them several months to catch up on property sales. Or often people put a trust address down rather than their home address, so it sits on somebody's desk for a while. I've gotten some feedback like that from folks that it took a while for them to respond.
So you're just asking for direction to begin the study and to approve the
Actually, what, what we had said last time is, due to my impending retirement, you had asked that I draft the RFP and have everything prepared, maps, notes and everything to hand off to my successor under Brad's supervision. So if the RFP looks acceptable tonight, and we do need direction on whether or not you want to include Janon Acres and Quail Valley, and we'll go ahead and finalize the map and the RFP and be prepared to go whenever Brad feels it's ready to start the study.
Financially, is it better to include Janon Acres and Quail Valley?
That's another thing. I think if we include Janon Acres, it's going to dramatically drive up the cost.
So a separate study would be more warranted, then?
Yes.
And you're working with lots of property owners when you work with Janon Acres and these others are
Yes, occupied properties, I understand it's a much longer, more drawn out process than working with vacant property owners.
I think we're also going to be looking at some real problems with both those. Beyond just residents. I'd just stick with what we have right now.
So, any other questions of staff? Then let's go to the public. Fred Kovell?
Mayor, City Councilmembers, Fred Kovell. I see all of this exercise. And there's got to be a reason for it. Why do we want to annex? Where's the sales brochure? What are the benefits? We know what we want. We think there's water over there, but there isn't right now. Even the biggest well is dry right now. There's no water over there.
Over where?
On the west side. Talk to Bob and Bill Peterson. They'll tell you what their wells are doing.
That's not the biggest well.
I understand that, but it doesn't take long for that well to be starting to pump air, that big as well. So I see the response for the adjacent properties, which is no response. The three Peterson properties. I, I hope there's some good reasons. They probably know what the reasons are. But until you go and get some real positive feedback from those guys, that there's a real benefit to be annexed by the city, I cannot see how you would make any direction to spend any money. Now, I understand that, of course, that a revenue, new revenue sources would be very beneficial to the city instead of just tourism. So there, there's just got to be some more effort here to come out here where everybody shows up from the annexation area and says, yeah, let's go for it. Let's make this a positive move on everybody's part. So I just hope that you slow down here and do some more work before you do anything. I mean, it's just pretty obvious after you look at this, especially if you look at one through nine here. Only Rose Skid is the only one that says include. Besides the vacant land at one, two and five on the north. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're just, yeah, yeah, I understand. But you just see, the big properties, the big movers and shakers in the adjacent properties are the ones with no responses.
Well, just a little bit of information about the Peterson property. The Peterson office is located in the city of solving. We do get the tax dollars from that.
Yes. They, and they also buy your, however, they do buy your out of city water. Their main is considered out of the city.
That's right.
So I can't understand your statement. If their water is outside the city to run that office only, how can you say they're in the city?
Their office is in the city of solving.
Is in the city.
Half of it is.
No, the whole office. I used to be their consultant. I know the property. It's in the city.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that information. I'll accept it. Very good. All right. Into my
Thank you, Fred. I have no other speaker slips. Anyone else wish to comment on this particular item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action, discussion. Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Ms. Jameson?
Okay, this is not a tomorrow type thing. This is looking down the road 30, 40 years. Because if we don't take some action now, we're going to lose out. And I think that we, we need some light industrial income in this community. We need to provide places for people to have their shops. And I don't know that we, if we can convince the Petersons to do something like that. But I know that the Croc people are interested. And they have the majority of that property on the west side. If you look at the field on the south of 246, the two fields on the north, plus the two hillside fields. And Rose Skid would like to be annexed in. But that being said, Rose Skid's property is already in the sphere of influence, as is a portion of the Peterson property. So Dar, Arlene said that she wanted to have the study do the economic aspect of it. Is that right? That's why we are including them? Okay. I would be in favor of moving forward with it. I just don't want to have a bag over my head and not look down the road from when we are not around. You've got to look down the road, folks. You've got to look to the future. We can't, we can't just continue to do what we're doing here.
Any other comments?
Yeah. There's been interest expressed from the beginning from one of the largest landholders, 180 acres worth, and that, in, in five parcels, or is it four? I don't know, I'm losing count now as they go in and out. And Yeah. And so that, that's by far the largest acreage that, that, that's being looked at. What is it, 188? And this has been ongoing since the first time we, we brought this up. There's interest there. Yes, this is a long term. We're looking out in the future. We're looking out to protect our borders from a county of the future that we have no idea what would do, but could have the potential for really impacting solving's gateway from both the west, the east and the north. We have no idea what they'll do. But if it's left in county domain, county control, we will have no say whatsoever on what is done on, on our entrance, on our entrances to the west, north or east. We'd be fools or we're setting our future generation up. We have an opportunity to start this process. We need to do it now for the future of solving. We have to take a long look at this. We have to take the long look.
Any other comments? I have a question about that item nine. Is that just a little like a one acre chunk, or is that an easement that goes all the way up to 246?
It's a well site.
I'm sorry?
It's a well site.
Oh, it's a well site?
24 by 24 or something like that.
Ah, okay. Any other comments? Can I have a motion?
So what we're, we're asking for is just the requests, the RFP, right?
We'd like you to solidify the study area, so that, obviously, we have the two parcels to the north that were added last time. We need the question of Janon Acres and Quail Valley answered. And then just whether or not you find the RFP acceptable.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion that if we can include all of the Croc property, we forget about and the rest of them, as shown, we, we don't include Janon or Quail Valley. And from what I've seen, the, the request for proposal, unless anybody else has any thoughts about that, it looks good to me.
I'll second. I'll second.
Any other comments? We moved in second. If you call, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Skid?
Yeah.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, let's pass with a five-oh. Onto item eight.
Item eight, wastewater treatment plant capacity analysis.
Staff report?
So, I think to start off, it'd be helpful to just review a little bit of background, what kind of led up to this wastewater treatment plant capacity analysis. And so, that starts basically back a few years...well, a few years ago, this county identified the Los Salivos area and some other areas surrounding the township of San Inez as having groundwater contamination due to leaking and failing septic systems. So, in two thousand...in February of two thousand fifteen, the county implemented what's known as the On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems Local Agency Management Program. So, the acronym that they selected for that is the LAMP ordinance. And basically, what that ordinance did was it established costly upgrade and replacement requirements for private septic systems. So, any person that was going to replace theirs, they had to upgrade it with these very costly type systems that actually provided a greater level of treatment before the water was allowed to leach into...or go out into the leach field and percolate into the groundwater basin. So, in response to that, there was a lot of interest from different property owners that were in the vicinity of San Inez in tying in to the sewer system. And so, there was a lot of discussion that came up about that. And so, in response, the San Inez Community Services District started pursuing efforts to annex additional areas. So, I think probably most of you are aware of that going on. Then, as a result of that, then they started thinking, "Well, if we're going to annex these areas, we better know how much capacity we have at the Solvang wastewater treatment plant." And so, in November of two thousand fifteen, they sent a letter, I believe it was addressed to the mayor, requesting that the city evaluate the available capacity. And also, they requested that we respond and indicate our will...the city's willingness to sell them up to twelve hundred...I'm sorry, one hundred and twenty thousand gallons per day of additional capacity. So, in response to that, the city hired Cannon Corporation to undertake the analysis of the wastewater...available wastewater treatment plant capacity. And that analysis was completed in May of two thousand sixteen. So, I did want to just explain, looking at the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant is not really as easy as it might sound because throughout the year, we have month-to-month fluctuations in the average daily flow to the treatment plant. In the winter, we get some infiltration and inflow that increases, basically, the manholes and pipes leak a little bit or take in, take on a little bit of the water during storms, during heavy storms. And so, the flow into the wastewater treatment plant will increase a little bit during storm events. And then, also in the summertime, when we have all the tourists and the hotels are more full and there's more people, you know, dining in the city, the wastewater flows go up. So, the flows coming into the plant throughout the course of the year, they will fluctuate. In addition to that, from...throughout the week and throughout the day, the flows fluctuate. So, you might have an average daily flow of, say, eight hundred thousand gallons per day coming into the plant. But in the morning, people are taking showers, using the restroom, cooking, you know, and things like that. And the flow goes up. And then, in the evening, same thing. So, throughout the day, the flow fluctuates. So, if you just look at the average, the average, the annual average daily flow, it doesn't give you the full picture. Doesn't really clarify the capacity that's available. So, the study looked at...looked in more detail at the flows. And through reverse engineering, we looked at how much water we provide to the different types of customer classes and completed the analysis. And so, just in summary, the...in summary, the San Inez Community Services District has...only has available capacity of nineteen thousand gallons per day or point zero one nine million gallons per day, annual average daily flow. And so, they're...they own zero point three MGD, or million gallons per day, capacity in the plant. And their available remaining capacity is zero point zero one nine MGD. And so, that would not be adequate capacity to meet their build-out, their existing...their existing service area build-out. However, there are a couple caveats. So, their average annual daily flows have been dropping over the last few years, partly because of the drought and people are retrofitting with lower water-using fixtures and things like that. But anyway, so it's been trending down slightly over the drought. And you may be aware, recall that ID one is not allowing any new connections. So, pretty much over the last few years, there hasn't been any increased demand, water demand, to result in increased flow to the sewer system. But anyway, so the flows have been trending downward. In addition, any study like this, we're coming up with estimates. There's no exact way to...we don't have a flow meter on each property to know exactly what's going on, how much flow is going into the sewer system. So, we estimate the conditions by developing what we call sewer duty factors based on the different type of land uses. And again, looking at, you know, what the water usage is for that type of land use and estimating the amount of percentage of that that would end up in the sewer system. So, it's possible that they may have adequate capacity to meet that build-out of their existing service area, but certainly not to add additional annexed areas. But there's more coming on that. So, the city of Solvang, we have two hundred ninety-eight thousand gallons per day of annual average daily capacity available to us. So, we're in a much better situation. We have capacity to meet more than our build-out demand. However, what has complicated everything is within the last year, the Regional Water Quality Control Board has started evaluating the San Inez River and identified that nitrogen in the form of nitrate and ammonia is one of the top priority pollutants for the San Inez River Basin. And they have, just last month, at the beginning of last month, August, they made an informal notification to the city staff that when our waste discharge permit is renewed, which is up for renewal in two thousand seventeen, when that's renewed, they have told us that they intend to include nitrogen and ammonia discharge limits in our renewed permit. So, knowing that, they have asked us if we can basically do some experimentation at the wastewater treatment plant and attempt to denitrify the wastewater. So, they're asking us to tweak our treatment process so that a chemical reaction will occur that...actually, it's a biochemical reaction will occur that converts the nitrates and ammonia to nitrogen gas. So, it will allow a reaction to occur, and nitrogen will be released in the form of nitrogen gas. And I'm sure, as you're aware, if you remember your high school chemistry, a high percentage of our atmosphere, or the air that we breathe, is nitrogen. So, in that form, it's totally safe, and it stays out of our groundwater basin and out of the...out of the effluent from the treatment plant. So, they've asked us to do that. We've started doing that and had some limited success. Then, we engaged the assistance of a consultant, Corolla Engineers. They came out, visited the plant, looked at our process, and they made some recommendations. The recommendations that they've made require that we implement some programming changes to the computer control system for the plant so that we can automatically run these modified processes. And so, we're in the process of having that done right now. And the only thing is, right now, we have the three sequencing batch reactor basins. So, we have these three basins. Essentially, one of them is a standby or a backup. We're only using the two basins. But the new process that we're trying to...that we'll be experimenting may require that we take that same amount of flow and distribute it to all three basins. So, that will essentially eliminate a lot of our excess capacity that we have right now. So, we're going to try initially to see if we can achieve the denitrification with the two existing basins. But we already know that, you know, from the chemistry and everything, that we may have to go and use that third basin. So, it's going to take several months for us to finish...well, we're going to finish the programming in the next few weeks, and then, we're going to start this process. And some of it's going to be trial and error. The timing of the different sequences in the process will be tweaked and adjusted. And so, we're hoping to come to the perfect kind of, you know, timing on each of the processes to achieve this. Anyway, so we should find out in a few months, and we'll be able to report back to you. But if it requires all three basins, then that's going to have major implications because essentially, it's going to more or less wipe out our...most of our additional available capacity. And so, if that is the case, staff would come back with the recommendation of possible future project, capital improvement project, to either restore or possibly restore and increase the wastewater treatment plant capacity. And just regarding the financial aspects, the wastewater treatment plant capacity analysis cost the city eleven thousand dollars. So, that was a really good fee, a good price for doing that pretty extensive study. And the SCADA or the computer programming that we need to do is going to cost the city fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. So, those are our only costs so far. The cost to tweak the process and the trial and error of adjusting our process sequencing, there's no cost to that. Our own staff will be doing all that. But anyway, so that's the summary, and that concludes my staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions, staff report? I have a couple, actually. On page three, your remaining capacity calculations for CSD.
Mm-hmm.
You say that that's a finite number, but in the next paragraph, you say it would be inadequate capacity, but it could change? So, I'm kind of confused. You say we've got a definite limit, but then, in the next paragraph, you say, "But maybe we don't."
Yeah, it's...well, that's the nature...that's trying to explain that, you know, the flows fluctuate. And well, first of all, their flows are...their average flows, let's say, they're right here. Well, to go to build-out, they need to go to here. But they only have capacity to go to here, available capacity. But they're...the same number of businesses and homes, from year to year, have been putting in slightly less flow into the sewer system over the last few years. So, it's constantly in flux. So, we can't...you know, you can't pin it down and say, "That's exactly what it is." And then, it fluctuates throughout the year and throughout the day and weekly, you know.
Did you take...did you take into account the expansion of CSD?
Yeah, they don't...they don't have...they don't have capacity to expand. They don't even have...they don't even have capacity...
But they took on...
Or they may not have capacity to go from existing to the build-out of their current service area. If they didn't annex anything else...
Well, they have annexed.
Well...
And so, and so, what we're saying is, and the annexation are just with septic tanks, but not into a sewer system, but eventually, they will go into a sewer system.
Right, right, sure.
I'm just thinking that we shouldn't allow any more expansion because of this increased sewer system demand that they're going to have. We should prohibit any more build-out because, according to your calculations, we're on the cusp of being...exceeding their legitimate flow.
Right.
That is staff's recommendation to decline the sale of any additional capacity. So, obviously, the capacity they have, they own.
They don't...that's it?
Yeah.
And we can limit their capacity? I mean, if they decided to open the valve a little bigger, is there any way we can stop them?
Well, we do monitor the flows. And so, the idea with the wastewater treatment plant capacity analysis, the consultant developed an Excel spreadsheet tool that they can use. They can see, "Okay, this is where we're at today as we add properties to the sewer system. And we're going to continue to monitor the flow." Because if every single property's flow going in reduces slightly, then that's going to, you know...
Sure.
Keep it down, and they can add more. But they're going to...it's going to be their responsibility. Well, we'll monitor it also, but we're asking them to also monitor it for their own benefit so they don't, you know, agree to connect somebody and it puts them over.
Someday, the drought's going to end, and someday, people are going to use a lot of water? That's going to change your prognostication?
Yeah, that's why the analysis tried to be somewhat conservative, not overly conservative, but somewhat conservative to take that into consideration. So, you know, I'm sure they would argue, "Oh, it's going to drop," you know, "continue to drop," or whatever. You know, so they do have some available capacity. And because it's not an exact science and the flows do change over time, and, you know...
And since we're going to be doing that nitrogen study, that may take up our surplus.
Right, right.
But we both can't be taking up that surplus.
No, they...if it requires all three of the basins and that reduces our available capacity, that's going to reduce their available capacity by the same factor.
Now, this tweaking that we're asking to do for the nitrogen is...it's going to be the basis for our licensing, for our renewal of our license. Is that correct?
Not exactly. Let me clarify. So, they've told us already that they're going to hit us with these additional requirements.
Do they know what the standard requirement will be?
No.
Have they indicated what that will be?
The discharge limit, they have not told us yet.
So, we can tweak to a discharge limit, and they might decide that that's not good enough?
Well, I think it's more...I think it's more the other way. They're hoping we can show some significant improvement, and then, they'll say, "Okay, that's good enough." And they'll set the limit to what we've already demonstrated the plant can achieve. But you're right. We don't know. It could be the other way around.
Yeah, right. That's frightening.
But, yeah, so... Yeah, so, yeah, the TMDL study, the Total Maximum Daily Load study of the San Inez River, the different pollutants and so forth, that's going to be a lengthy process over a few years. We know that really, the wastewater treatment plant itself is not the source of nitrogen. It's coming from other sources that ends up at the treatment plant. So, they know that. So, they're...I'm sure they're going to have other regulations, but this is going to be a multi-year process for them to go through. this is gonna be a multi-year process for them to go through and, uh, many public hearings and so forth. But, uh, a- agriculture is definitely one of the primary sources of the nitrogen.
Is, is our out, uh, added capacity that we can build in, is that possible?
Oh, yeah, certainly. We can do, we can do a project to, to, uh, expand the, uh, capacity of the treatment plant or to restore this lost capacity. Uh, if we have to change our treatment process and that means our capacity is reduced, um, you know, we can do a project to, we could add a fourth basin. We have the three right now, we could add a fourth basin.
We could still add a fourth.
Yeah, uh, there's other, there's other things that we can do as well.
Okay.
But, um, and we could even retrofit, you know, the old treatment plant is still there with some basins.
Right.
And we could retrofit those to function as an additional basin. Uh, there's a little, some complications with that because it's lower in elevation, so we'd have to pump, we'd have to pump out of those.
Plumbing is not in good shape, I understand.
But, um, well, it's just the cost, you know, paying the power costs over, over the years and so forth.
So there is, there is available capacity increases, though?
Yes, we have enough, we have enough space at the treatment plant to add, you know, capacity to, to deal with.
I didn't mean to jump out in front of the rest of you. I know I'm supposed to wait my turn, but I couldn't help it. Does anybody else have, have any comments?
I have a couple, some question. Uh, when was our plant last upgraded? How many years ago? I wanna say it was...
Last upgraded, uh, quite a while ago. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't really know the exact year. I wanna say it was in the nineties, ninety years.
I wanna say it may even, even been before that, because I think it was in the, okay, now, the next, next question is, uh, if the ID or, uh, Community Service District goes ahead and starts, or they've, they've done their annexation or in the process of finishing it up, and they start bringing these additional, uh, units into the system, uh, at what point, uh, are we going to actually have to start expanding the pla- uh, capacity plant? And since it is going to be the ID, or I, I keep having a problem with ID one, so we won't blame, they, they, we have enough, they, they have enough problems of, of just on water, so I won't blame our sewer on it. But on Community Service District, uh, if they wanna bring these additional units into the system and it starts eating up their, going, exceeding their capacity, then they are, th- th- and they are gonna have to be the ones that basically pay for the upgraded plant. I would say the city of Solvang should not have to pay to upgrade the plant to meet the additional demands of, uh, Community Service Districts. They either pay upfront to us to redo the, or expand the plant, or they go out and say, decided to do it alone and build their own sewer plant or waste, okay, wrong term, wastewater treatment plant. But from what I've, you know, read in the past is that the state water quality control, they are trying to get more regional plants, having one larger plant cover an entire region. Is, is that true? Or could San Ines build their own plant? And that, and that doesn't even touch the question of Los Alamos and their, their, uh, uh, water quality problem. And it, because if they come on, if they come on board, they have to either, A, build a plant somewhere downstream of Los Alamos on the Alamo-Pentada Creek, or they have to run a real long line down Alamo-Pentada Road to the city of Solvang, which would also put an additional, uh, pressures on, on the treatment of, of the waste in our plant.
Well, just a couple, uh, items. Um, first of all, we should know within six or seven months, uh, what this, uh, altered process is gonna require and how that might affect our capacity. Uh, they still have to run quite a few, um, uh, quite a, you know, a few thousand feet of sewer collection system in order to add any new customers. So we should, we should know what's going on with the plant and how the, the new, uh, the denitrification, whether it reduces our capacity or not. Uh, we'll know that within, you know, like I said, six to seven months. Uh, that should be plenty of time before they start adding any new, um, connections. And once we know that, we'll have to do an evaluation. If it, if it doesn't affect the capacity, then of course, everything's fine. Uh, if it does, then we'll have to evaluate how that is shared by both agencies. And, um, I was gonna mention, you know, the, uh, the San Ines Community Services District is in the middle of a recycle water study, and they've, uh, been discussing, um, at various, you know, meetings and things, um, the possibility of, you know, having some wastewater treatment plant, uh, in San Ines or, or just below Ballard or, you know, different places. Uh, so they're already talking about that as a possible option. Uh, I'm not sure how serious they're considering that, but, but that's already been discussed, having a smaller, uh, plant. And I think the, the huge original plant concept, um, is kind of a ol- older thinking, and the newer thinking is having smaller, uh, more localized plants because the state's really wanting to promote the use of recycle water. And so if you have, you don't have to pump the water as far to use it. You know, you, you, you basically treat it and reuse it kinda right in the same area. So you're not having miles of distribution pipelines back and forth and pumping all that, you know, so.
Drive is already successful with that, right now.
Correct, yeah. Of course, they do have a really nice multimillion dollar, uh, state-of-the-art treatment plant.
Matt, what's, what's the structure of the relationship between Community Services District and Solvang?
Uh, um...
Are we, are, is it a contract?
It's a contract.
It is a contract.
Yeah, we have, we have...
And it's for X amount of capacity.
Correct.
And, uh, so if they exceed X amount of, um, capacity that they have contracted for, what happens?
We either work in our, or it's Lawyers Full Employment Act, but they have to comply.
They have to comply, or, or buy more capacity.
Right.
Okay, so I think, I think that answers a lot of questions out there, uh, about what if and when's and stuff like that. If they don't have capacity, they can't use it unless they buy it. Pretty simple to me. And so if they, they can annex all they want, that doesn't mean that they are going to be able to shove it into our plant.
Correct.
Simple. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Questions? Go to the public, thank you, Matt. I have one public comment, Fred Koval.
Fred Koval, Solvang, Mayor and City Council members. Long time ago, Liam Atheson would say the issue, the bottleneck is the force main. Can you get, do you have the ability to add capacity? Can you get it to the treatment plant? I haven't heard any words on that tonight. Where are we on that? No idea. So in all your thinking, adding, making bigger bathtubs over there, or add more bathtubs over there across the river, you're gonna have, you'll need a bigger pipe. And it's not just a plain old pipe either. It's gotta be a pipe that's gonna handle the next hundred-year flood, or thousand-year flood that's gonna come raging down. Hasn't done it yet, but boy, you, there's some real bare, open areas in that pipe. And it looks like some of the, um, some of the, the, uh, vertical supports in there are leaning quite a bit. It's under stress. So anyway, you know, there's a simple solution to this. Just buy the capacity back from CSD. Buy it back. Let the residents of Solvang have more life out of, out of the force main and out of the, the operation, uh, of the wastewater treatment plant. Buy it back and tell them, "Hey, you guys, do what the Chumash did." Okay, you know, have their own, drop it, drop in one of these little things, as Matt has said, you know? And, uh, let them start relying that on their own. Their time is up. You know, we've given all we, we need to give. Get over it. And, and I would start telling them, you know, "That's what you need to do, stand on your own two feet. We need to protect ourselves." Course, the alternative is, the Koval alternative is, that I've said several times, is just give the whole operation to the CSD, let them manage it. Let them manage our whole sewer system. Then they get, then they get to do what they want. They ain't do any, they might abandon it right away and put in a, a, a drop-in treatment plant. It's probably a lot better than what our bathtubs are today. Their bathtub, our bathtubs went in around somewhere ninety-six to two thousand. Okay. True, true for thought.
Thank you.
Question for...
Just insert there. We, we replaced the force main about eight years ago.
Yeah, and if I remember right, the force, the force main was drilled through the bedrock underneath, so...
Those are not the current, uh, force main lines, towers.
What you see is not being, you know, being utilized for the force main.
It's the underground. So it's good, so it's good for a few more years.
It's good for, it's until the bedrock wears down on top of it. There's about ten to fifteen feet of bedrock on top of the current force main.
You might be talking about the line going across the bridge. Were you talking about that?
No, no, I'm talking about the one that I...
Oh, you were talking about leaning and that kinda thing? No?
The state project water pipe is leaning.
No, that, no, that, we have a, we have a water pipe that comes from the ranch across the bridge into the...
Yeah, in the other side.
Uh, are there any other, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action discussion. Who's first?
I'm ready to make a mo- I'm ready to make a motion, uh, that we go with staff recommendation, receive and file a report and direct staff to respond to Community Service District, uh, letter indicating uncertain available capacity and decline sale of any remaining available capacity.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Would you call a roll, please? If there's no other discussion, call a roll.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes, that passed with a five oh. Next item. Councilmember reports and SB CAG is, I believe, the only one unless there's...
Library.
And the lib- and which?
Library.
Library. Uh, you all received, uh, the abbreviated, uh, res- uh, report on SB CAG. Is there any questions to it? And if there is, I'll answer them. If there's not, we'll consider the report done and good. Okay, on to the library report.
Okay, Shirley Stacy asked me to attend the advisory, the library advisory committee meeting last week, which I did. She asked me to request that the advisory committee relook at how the various per capita funds were allocated. Nobody really wants to do that right now. So I would, I think, and Eddie, you, I mean, you've sat in that committee with me, Brad sat in that committee, we're not getting anywhere, we're not moving. I think that, um, we as a city should create a letter to the library advisory committee requesting in very strong terms that we would like them to reexamine, uh, the, break down the per capita for the built-in library, the Solvang library.
Need a nod, we, nodding of the heads?
Yeah, and I can work with the ad hoc committee on the language.
Right. Any other discussions, committee reports? Nothing with that, then we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.